They're fun to watch, unlike your team, not very fun.
They're a lot more and a lot better at uh odds of winning than they do with my.
They're much more athletic.
His team was fun on Saturday.
Much more athletic, too.
Is Chris on?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to call the order of the Des Moines City Council meeting of February 19th, 2024 to order. Please take the roll.
Bowson.
Here.
Voss.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Westergaard. Mandelbaum.
Here.
Gatto.
Here.
We have a forum.
Item number two is approving the agenda as presented or as amended, and I'll go over some of the amended items that can on consent agenda. Forty-one was withdrawn, inspections are incomplete. On the regular agenda items, forty-three B has been added to a final consideration of the ordinance above waiver requested by the applicant requires six votes. Number forty-six updated and is to continue to March 4th, 2024 council meeting. And forty-six A, forty-six B has been withdrawn, the hearing continued. Number fifty-five is updated, the speaker, which is our speaker list.
Move approval.
There's been a motion and a second, please vote.
Coleman, yes.
Six, yes.
Motion carries. The next item is number three, which is approving the consent agenda, and those are items three through forty-one. These are routine items and will be enacted by one roll call vote without separate discussion unless pursuant to council rules, council requests, an item be removed to be considered separately. And tonight we have under our new policy, a new, uh, we have a speaker, Carol Maher, you have up to three minutes to speak if you'd like to state your name, address, ward.
Thank you, I'm excited to break the seal on this new speaking.
First one.
Uh, my name is Carol Maher, I live proudly in Ward Three. Thank you, Mayor Bowson, again for allowing residents to speak on agenda items before they are voted on. I even have show and tell. As most of you know, I'm a year-round bicyclist. I ride in shorts, in skirts, in snow pants, whatever works to get me around. I ride in the street, in bike lanes, protected by white paint, green paint, off-street, and of course, on the trails. I ride the Levy Trail from the west side of Des Moines, who was Des Moines, not to shop at Jordan Creek, but to visit family. And that's the item that is seven B tonight is um uh to repair, reconstruct the Levy Trail, which I'm very thrilled about the total makeover of the Levy Trail, especially going from asphalt to Portland um Mac Concrete or PCC. Thank you to the hard-working, mostly dudes in Parks and Recs Trail and Engineering and Traffic and Transport for making this a priority and getting the funding together. I have one simple S, and that's to address two concrete squares that abut the Walnut Creek Trail that is directly adjacent to this project. Because there's a lip on all four sides of that um concrete. I have show and tell, so.
Oh.
There we go. So this kind of shows, this is where, this is a square of concrete, this is the bridge, and this square has sunken there and there. You can see it maybe not better there, but here's coming from the south. This is the part of the trail that's going to be gone from asphalt to PCC. And this is little one square right here on the south side that has the same problem with the ledge, like that, like that. And with my non-beautiful finger in there showing you the depth, about two inches at. So it would be really great if possible, I know this is only a scheduling for hearing, that if the engineering and Parks and Recs Department might um consider adding those two squares of concrete to this project, so it doesn't bust tires or give you an unsmooth ride on your behind. Thank you.
Your Honor, do we need to receive and file her comments and direct it to the city engineer? Is that what you, I don't, I don't know, since this is our first time doing this.
You could do that.
All right, how about we receive and file her comments and refer this portion of it to the engineer for in Parks Department for inspection and see if, obviously, it looks like it needs some work.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we will give that to our city manager to look into. And now I'll ask for a motion and a second on the consent items, but before that, we have item number four E, Gatto is abstaining. Number five, Voss is a no. Thirty-eight C, Westergaard chooses to speak, and thirty-three, Coleman chooses to speak. With that.
Move item three, Your Honor.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second, please vote on the consent items.
Coleman, yes.
Six, yes.
Motion carries. With that, we will turn to our hearings. And the first hearing is number forty-two, on vacation of a portion of the Masonic Temple Cemetery located southwest in the interior to the intersection of Forty-Eighth Street and Franklin Avenue and conveyance to Child Serve Habilitation Center Incorporated for the purchase price of $600,000. Council Communication number twenty-four dash zero eight-two, A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. We will accept your main comments from the general public, two minutes per person to speak, ten minutes maximum. Is there anyone wishes to speak to this? If not, I will entertain a motion as on this item.
I would move this item.
Okay, there is a motion and a second, please vote.
Do you want to pursuant to Rule forty-two A waive the second and third reading, Chris, or you want to wait?
I'd probably rather wait and waive the third reading next time, if that's okay with people.
Sounds great.
Okay with that.
Coleman, yes.
Motion carries. The next item is number forty-three, on a request from Juan's Auto Repair LLC, Juan Lopez Officer, to amend the Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow comprehensive plan to revise the future land use classification from business park within a regional node to community mixed use within a regional node, and to rezone the property located at sixteen sixty East Army Post Road from EX mixed-use district to CX misuse district to allow construction of a new auto body repair shop. A is first consideration of ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of ordinance above, waiver requested by applicant, and it requires six vote. Again, if there's anyone, the first party of interest, applicant for rezoning, and those within two hundred and fifty feet of the property to be rezoned. They will be given up to five minutes to speak, and second would be your main comments from the general public, two minutes per person to speak, twenty minutes maximum. Seeing no one, I'll open this up to the council.
I guess is Juan, is Juan here, or anyone representing them?
If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I, I just, I had, just maybe staff can answer the question. And I, I seen the drawing of how it looked with the fence around it. I guess I need to know how tall the fence is going to be, how many, you know, cars that are beat up, going to be sitting outside on the corridor and things like that? If that, that's going to be screened correctly and I was hoping Juan, I, I haven't met Juan, I was hoping he would be here tonight so he can answer some of the questions, but maybe staff can help me.
Come in, but I know some of your questions will deal with after the fact.
The site man.
Right.
I, I guess I'd love to hear what staff has to.
That's it. Sorry, if anyone wants to silence their phones.
Body shop down here that that we see, you know, that we really don't see a lot of damaged cars, is that, is that, is that what we're going to see there?
Or is, what, what are we going to require them to do?
So I, Madam Mayor, members of council, Cody Christensen, Development Services Director. I don't have the details for you at this point on what the fence will look like. What I can say is that the site will need to comply with all of the design requirements for this district and for this building type.
What are the requirements for this building, for a body shop? What, what is, how tall is the fence, how much screening's around there? I guess that, that would be the question that I'd, maybe you can help me with.
It's, it's going to take me a minute to, to pull this stuff up, but.
I can continue it, and we can have a discussion with the owner if you want. It doesn't matter to me, I mean, I was hoping he would be here tonight, you would think as we go through this process, he would at least showed up.
For, for the, for that level of detailed discussion, it probably would be best to continue.
I'll, I'll move to continue item forty-three.
Do you want the first, or?
No, I don't want anything yet. I want to see what it's going to look like before I, before we put this on a major corridor that's a, a TIF area that we're going to really looking at, trying to improve the neighborhood, I want to make sure this is going to fit in. And I've had no correspondence with this gentleman at all, at all. Don't know who he is, don't, never met him, don't know anything about him, don't know anything, does he have a, a current business somewhere, the model that we can look at? Is, this is a vacant piece of parcel there. So I'll move to continue, continue forty-three.
Is there a second? If there's a motion to continue, please vote.
Coleman, yes.
Six, yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Cody.
Item number forty-four is on a request from Elam Christian Fellowship of Des Moines, Michael K. Hurst Officer, to amend the Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow comprehensive plan to revise the future land use classification from public slash semi-public to downtown mixed use and to rezone the property located at five twenty-five East, East Ninth Street, from PT to Public Civic and Institutional District to DXR Downtown District to allow renovation of an existing church building for a school and multiple housing residential use. A is first consideration of ordinance above, B is final consideration of ordinance above, waiver requested by the applicant, requires six votes. First will be the parties of interest, the applicant for rezoning, and those within two hundred feet of the property to be rezoned will be given up to five minutes to speak. Second, your main comments from the general public, two minutes per person to speak, twenty minutes maximum. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I'll open it up to discussion, and if there's from the council or a motion to approve.
I'll move forty-four A and forty-four B.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, please vote.
Coleman, yes.
Six, yes.
Motion carries. Next item is forty-five, on a request from the City of Des Moines to amend the Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow comprehensive plan to revise the, for the future land use classification from business park to industrial and to rezone the property located in the vicinity of thirty-five hundred Vandelia Avenue from EX mixed-use district to one, I two industrial district to allow the development of a vehicle storage, maintenance, and operation facility for the Des Moines Area Regional Transit Authority. A is first consideration of the ordinance above, B is final consideration of the ordinance above. Waver requested by Cody Christensen, Development Service Director, requires six votes. Again, first is the parties of interest, applicant for the rezoning, and those within two hundred and fifty feet of the property to be rezoned will be given five minutes to speak, and second will be your main comments from the general public, two minutes per person. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this item? I'll open it up to council.
Well, I'm glad that we're not seeing a cut with this, since that's all we've heard about is cuts from DART. So I'm, I'm glad we're able to, I guess, at least get their new maintenance facility built without a franchise fee being passed by Des Moines. So that's, that's a real positive. So moving in that direction, I'll move forty-five A and B.
Second.
With, please vote.
Coleman, yes.
Six, yes.
Motion carries. Next item is forty-six, on request of IA nine Des Moines LLC, Brian Slama Officer, to amend the Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow comprehensive plan to revise the future land use classification from low-density residential within a neighborhood node to business park within a neighborhood node, and to rezone three parcels located in the vicinity of fourteen seventy-five Hart Avenue from N one A Neighborhood District to limited EX miss, mixed-use district to allow the development of self-storage and/or flex warehouse buildings, where no individual storage unit shall be less than six hundred square feet in area and continuing to the March fourth, twenty twenty-four council meeting.
Thanks, Your Honor, I'll move item forty-six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is the motion a second, please vote.
Coleman, yes.
Six, yes.
Motion carries. Next item is forty-six, on request of IA nine Des Moines LLC, Brian Slama Officer, to amend the Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow comprehensive plan to revise the future land use classification from low-density residential within a neighborhood node to business park within a neighborhood node, and to rezone three parcels located in the vicinity of fourteen seventy-five Hart Avenue from N one A Neighborhood District to limited EX miss, mixed-use district to allow the development of self-storage and/or flex warehouse buildings, where no individual storage unit shall be less than six hundred square feet in area and continuing to the March fourth, twenty twenty-four council meeting.
Thanks, Your Honor, I'll move item forty-six.
Is there a second? There's a motion, a second, please vote.
Coleman, yes.
Six, yes.
Motion carries. Next item is forty-five, on a request from the City of Des Moines to amend the Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow comprehensive plan to revise the, for the future land use classification from business park to industrial and to rezone the property located in the vicinity of thirty-five hundred Vandelia Avenue from EX mixed-use district to one, I two industrial district to allow the development of a vehicle storage, maintenance, and operation facility for the Des Moines Area Regional Transit Authority. A is first consideration of the ordinance above, B is final consideration of the ordinance above. Waver requested by Cody Christensen, Development Service Director, requires six votes. Again, first is the parties of interest, applicant for the rezoning, and those within two hundred and fifty feet of the property to be rezoned will be given five minutes to speak, and second will be your main comments from the general public, two minutes per person. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this item? I'll open it up to council.
Well, I'm glad that we're not seeing a cut with this, since that's all we've heard about is cuts from DART. So I'm, I'm glad we're able to, I guess, at least get their new maintenance facility built without a franchise fee being passed by Des Moines. So that's, that's a real positive. So moving in that direction, I'll move forty-five A and B.
Second.
With, please vote.
Coleman, yes.
Six, yes.
Motion carries. Next item is forty-six, on request of IA nine Des Moines LLC, Brian Slama Officer, to amend the Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow comprehensive plan to revise the future land use classification from low-density residential within a neighborhood node to business park within a neighborhood node, and to rezone three parcels located in the vicinity of fourteen seventy-five Hart Avenue from N one A Neighborhood District to limited EX miss, mixed-use district to allow the development of self-storage and/or flex warehouse buildings, where no individual storage unit shall be less than six hundred square feet in area and continuing to the March fourth, twenty twenty-four council meeting.
Thanks, Your Honor, I'll move item forty-six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is the motion a second, please vote.
Coleman, yes.
Six, yes.
Motion carries. Item forty-seven is dismissing hearing on a request from Clayton Enterprises, George Michael Clayton Officer, to amend the Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow comprehensive plan to revise the future land use classification from low-medium-density residential to high-density residential for property, property located at seventeen twenty-six Oakland Avenue to allow three additional dwelling units within the existing building, which would cause the net density of the property to be greater than seventeen dwelling units per acre. First would be the parties of interest, and the applicant for rezoning, and those within two hundred and fifty feet of the property to be rezoned. And second would be your main comments from the general public, for up to two minutes. Is there want, anyone wishing to speak to this? Now open it up to council. Is there a motion?
Move, Coleman.
Second.
There's a motion, it's been moved, and second, please vote.
Coleman, yes.
Six, yes.
Motion carries. Number forty-eight, on approval of form and authorizing execution of a lease within, with nineteen oh one Bell Avenue LLC for use of forty-two hundred square feet of warehouse space located at nineteen oh one Bell Avenue by the Police Department for storage of impounded vehicles. Again, your main comments from the general public, two minutes per person, up to ten minutes maximum. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this?
Um, my name is Abby Banks, I use she/her pronouns, I'm in Ward Three, and feel like a broken record, but I don't think we should be putting more money towards anything to do with the police bu, uh, police budget. I think it's ridiculous, and I think, yeah, I think we should put that money towards things that actually help people and keep people safe, and not just more fucking cops. So that's it.
Open it up to the council.
I'll move item forty-eight.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, please vote.
Coleman, yes.
Six, yes.
Motion carries. Item forty-nine, on twenty twenty-four Neighborhood Sidewalk Program Contract to Resolution Approving Plans, Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineer's Estimate, Receive and File Bids, and Designating the Lowest Responsive, Responsible bidder as TK Concrete Inc., Tony J. Vermeer President, for five hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars. Council Communications number twenty-four dash zero sixty-five, A is Approval of Contract and Bond. General public may comment only to the plans, specifications, form of documents, engineers estimate, or low bidder designation, and those will be the only comments to be considered, Jermaine, two minutes per person to speak, ten minutes maximum.
Seeing none, Your Honor, I'll move item forty-nine, forty-nine A.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second, please vote.
Coleman, yes.
Six, yes.
Motion carries. Item number fifty, on Sixty-third Street Trail from Southwest McKinley Avenue to the Raccoon Resolution Approving Plans, Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineers Estimate, Receive and File Bids, and Designating the Lowest Responsive, Responsible bidder as Corel Contractor Inc., Grant C, or as Corel President, for one million, three hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents. Council Communication number twenty-four dash zero six nine, A is Approval of the Contract and Bond. Again, general public may comment only on the plans, specifications, form of documents, engineers estimate, or low bidder designation, and those will be the only comments to be considered, Jermaine, two minutes per person to speak, ten minutes maximum.
Seeing none, Your Honor, I'll move item fifty and fifty A.
Second. I'd like to speak just briefly on this item. This is a great project that's a cooperation between Des Moines, West Des Moines, and the State of Iowa. So it's terrific to see, I think, I think the West Des Moines Project will be completed next year, so good project, so thank you.
Uh, please vote.
And to Councilmember Voss's point, part of why this is such a great project is it provides some connectivity for a couple different purposes, but the Deer Ridge Apartments, which were pretty isolated and had people walking along a state highway in really unsafe conditions, this gets some connectivity, so those folks can, uh, can walk both the, the convenience stores and to Valley Junction. So it provides a little more accessibility for those folks as well.
Okay, that, please vote.
Great project. Coleman, yes.
Six, yes.
Motion carries. Fifty-one, it's on Union Park Rocket Slide Repair, Resolution Approving Plans, Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineers Estimate, Receive and File Bids, and Designating the Lowest Responsive, Responsible bidder as Cushman Escavating LLC, Chad Cushman Manager, for five hundred and eighty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty-two cents. Council Communication number four dash zero six six, A is Approval of the Contract and Bond. General public may comment only to the plans, specifications, form of documents, engineers estimate, or low bidder designation, and those will be the only comments to be considered, Jermaine, two minutes per person to speak, ten minutes maximum. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none.
Seeing none. Please to move. Chris, I'll expect you and I to go down that slide once it's done, just like you did.
I'll be on it. I worked my way through college at Union Park, I love this project.
It's a great restoring of a great item for the area of Union Park. So with that, there's motion, a second, please vote.
Is this supposed to be completed this year?
Coleman, yes.
Six, yes.
Uh, is this supposed to be completed this year, or is, okay.
That's, motion carries. Next item is fifty-two, on Woodland Cemetery Retaining Wall Replacement. Resolution Approving Plans, Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineers Estimate, Receive and File Bids, and Designate the Lowest Responsive, Responsible bidder as Minor Hartsgate LLC, Matthew J. Minor Owner, for six hundred and one thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars. Council Communication number twenty-four dash zero six seven, A is Approval of the Contract and Bond. Again, the general public may comment only to the plans, specifications, form of documents, engineers estimate, or low bidder designation, and those will be the only comments considered, Jermaine, two minutes per person to speak, up to ten minutes. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this item? If not, I'll turn it over.
Seeing none, I'll, I'll move item fifty-two and fifty-two A.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second, please vote.
Coleman, yes.
Six, yes.
That is the end of the hearings, and it's five twenty-five. So, we go back.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go back to number thirty-three. Preliminary terms of an urban renewal development agreement with Town Hall Associates LP for the historic renovation of sixteen oh one Sixth Avenue into a mixed-use residential and commercial development, and the new construction of a mixed-use residential and commercial building at sixteen oh five, sixteen oh nine, and sixteen nineteen Sixth Avenue. Council Communication number twenty-four dash zero six four. I believe Councilman Coleman wanted to speak to this item.
I did, over my time watching the city, we sometimes get criticized for not valuing our history. I just wanted to give a shout out to everybody that's been involved in this project long before I represented Ward One. I think this first showed up on the agenda over two years ago. Uh, I met the development team at the site last week, and it's a really promising concept, design, and the right team to do it. So I'm really excited that we're at this point, and it's really important that the city can um uh invest in this historic site. That can also be a real asset to the quality of life on Sixth Avenue. So thanks to the Riverbend Neighborhood Association, Kathy and everybody, and to the development team. I'll move it when it's ready.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion, a second, please vote.
Coleman, yes.
Six, yes.
Motion carries. The next item is thirty-eight C that Councilwoman Westergaard would like to speak on.
Would like to move item thirty-eight A and B, but thirty-eight C, I would like to continue until that people can change.
Second.
We need to just vote on A and B.
I think you, only thirty-eight C was polled, so thirty-eight A and B have already been approved. So you just would need to move to continue thirty-eight C.
Okay, then I would move to continue thirty-eight.
Second.
Second.
With a motion and a second, please vote.
Coleman, yes.
Six, yes.
Next item is fifty-three, it's amending chapter forty-six of the municipal code relating to amendments and additions to the requirements contained in the twenty-twenty-one edition of the International Fire Code. Counsel Communication number twenty-four dash oh five eight, A is the final consideration of the ordinance above, waiver requested by John Tekip, fire chief, requires six votes. Any discussion?
I'll move fifty-three and fifty-three A.
There's a motion moved and seconded, please vote.
Coleman?
Yes.
Six, yes.
Item fifty-four is amending chapter one fourteen of the municipal code regarding traffic regulation changes as follows. Counsel Communication number twenty-four dash zero seven five, A, parking modifications, golf house drive between Echo Valley Drive and the South City Limits, B, parking modifications, Harriet Street from southeast Fourteenth Street to southeast Fifteenth Street, C, parking restrictions within dead ends, one is Jerrylan Avenue between North Union Street and East Tenth Street, two is Sampson Street between Cleveland Avenue and East Washington Avenue, D is code correction, East Seventeenth Street at East University Avenue, and E is code corrections, misspelled or omitted words, at number one, State Avenue at East Twenty-Fourth Street, and number two, East Walnut Street between East Eighteenth Street and East Thirtieth Any discussion? If not...
Move item fifty-four, A, B, C, D, E, pursuant to rule forty-two A, I'll waive the second and third reading for all of them.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, please vote.
Coleman, yes.
Six, yes.
Motion carries. Next item is fifty-five, which is our communications report. We provide speakers under the public speaking portion the opportunity to address the council for up to three minutes each, or up to twenty speakers for a total of one hour on the agenda. Speakers will be called forward individually, and we ask everyone to please state their name, address, or ward prior to providing comments. As a reminder to the council and the public, this public speaking time is not a time for council to gauge and discussion. Matters requiring attention will receive appropriate staff or council follow-up at time after the meeting. And thank you for coming out tonight and speak, and we appreciate your input. So the first one is Lou Almeyer, is Lou here? No.
Hello, my name is Annie Sarkone, and I live in Ward One. I am here today to express my extreme disappointment in the city's lack of vocal support and action for the LGBTQ+ community. Over forty anti-LGBTQ+ bills were introduced in the state legislature this year. While thirty-three have been defeated, the seven left are still very harmful. I'm a member of the trans community here in Des Moines, and I work with trans and queer youth. I've been at the Capitol multiple times and given personal testimony. Can you imagine what it's like to sit in front of twenty-plus people practically begging them to stop the hate, to not take away basic civil rights? It's something I don't want anyone to go through, and yet we are actively having to do it. The silence coming from all of you is deafening. The excuse that these are state issues cannot stand any longer. The LGBTQ+ community here is very active and vibrant in Des Moines. We give back to our communities, we partner with local businesses, we bring in new business to those local businesses. Currently, members of my community organize with over twenty-five local businesses hosting drag brunches, dinners, and events. My queer friends that own businesses here are unsure if staying in Iowa is the right choice for them, and the lack of support from our city government officials is making them question staying in Des Moines. I grew up here, I was born and raised on the South Side. During my twenties, I moved away for a while and came back in October of twenty-twenty. I love living in Des Moines, my family is here, my chosen family is here, but I think about leaving, but I also know we can do better for my community. I'm proposing Des Moines adopts an LGBTQ+ sanctuary city ordinance. I sent you all an email earlier with cities that have adopted similar ordinances. A simple statement is not enough, we are past that, we need stronger action. I'm currently working on organizing a community forum and inviting members from my community to come speak and voice their concerns. Once it's scheduled, we will invite all of you via email to attend and listen. And let me just say, your attendance will say a lot to our community. If you choose not to show up, then don't bother coming to our, to walk in our pride parades or wearing a rainbow during June, we don't want your performative allyship, we want you to take action when we are being attacked, and we want to feel safe and accepted in Des Moines. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Adam Callanan, I live in Ward Three. Des Moines needs to adopt hybrid meetings so that more residents can be heard at meetings. Other cities across Iowa have this, and it's embarrassing that Iowa's biggest city fails to offer this. The more voices, the better. Right now, people are being left out, people that are working during these meetings and can't take a minute off to come down here, take some amount of time to come down here and speak. People with kids, disabled people, people without transportation, people who are traveling, and I know that voices are being left out, so we need to grant virtual access. If so, then I'll finally get to stop saying this and get to hear less from me. And on just other types of access where we're lacking, the budget seems to be late, I'm not sure if it actually is. Last year, we heard from the budget around like February sixth or tenth, we had budget workshops. This year, we still haven't, hopefully this week, something will happen, but there's just been a lot of lack of transparency around issues like the budget, issues like what's happening with the DART franchise fee, issues of the plans of the new nationwide building, what's going in there. We just across the board need more accessibility and transparency into city issues, so more people can give input, more people can know what's going on in their city, and more people can be able to trust the city. Thank you.
So I'm Cody Delinsec, and I'm at twenty-six zero seven Southwest Prairie Trail Parkway in Ankeny, Iowa. And I want to address the city council about the bus service that has come up for discussion of late. And one of the things that I want to begin by, by saying is that, in economics, there's the idea that everything depends on everything else. So there isn't any such thing as a, an independence-free zone, where we are all dependent, rather, on each other, there is not any such thing as a dependence-free zone. One of the consequences of this, it seems to me, is that in areas where there is little to no bus service, we ought to be thinking about the possibility of increasing it rather than diminishing it further. Now, why do I say this? I say this because in communities where bus service is needed, you can depend upon it that for one reason or another, the people who are living in that community can't, can't drive. Many times when we try to think about how best to serve a community, the people who come to our minds first are the people who are like us. But not everyone is like us, and not everyone has the same issues, the same difficulties. When I think about my own life as a blind person, I've been blind since birth. If it weren't for the fact that I didn't have access to bus service, I wouldn't be able to get regularly to my job, which would mean that I wouldn't have one, which would mean that the state would be forfeited the right to my taxes. Also, from a social point of view, people who are prohibited from working due to lack of transportation options also are not given the benefit of, of social participation in the communities in which they live. Even if people do what we might consider minimal work, it is still work that is valued by someone, and there ought to be a transportation system in place that would exclude no one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Abby Banks, Ward Three, she/her. I just want to echo what Professor Delinsec said, we need to save DART so we can keep him at Drake, because he was my philosophy professor a couple years ago, and is great. So just one of the million reasons we need to keep it around. I want to start out by asking, how many of you have taken DART within the last six months? How many of you have even spoken to someone who uses DART regularly? Because if you did, and you had any shred of empathy or leadership skills, you'd be jumping at the opportunity to save such a vital service to our community. In conversations with folks who rely on DART to get around, it's clear that the city has done an absolutely abysmal job of communicating and understanding what this would actually mean for people who use DART regularly. The people I talk to are coming from school, work, grocery shopping, picking their kids up from childcare, visiting families, or just looking for a safe and comfortable place to exist. Can you imagine if you woke up one day and walked out of your home, only to realize that every transportation option you have is gone? Imagine now that even though this lack of transportation isn't your fault, you lose your job, your kids are hungry, you have no way to get to any source of food, you fall behind on bills, you lose your home, you want to get to the library or one of the very few designated warming spaces we have, you're out of luck. Too many people in our community wouldn't need to imagine this scenario, this would be the actual reality for people who rely on DART as their primary mode of transportation. I feel like I'm talking to a brick wall every time I say this, but it's literally your job to operate in the best interest of the people of Des Moines, and you have not only an opportunity to do this, but an obligation to the people to save DART. It's fascinating that you're willing to spend thousands and thousands of dollars on storage for vehicles impounded by the police and effectively building Des Moines' own cop city with the nationwide building acquisition, but all of a sudden, we're penny-pinching about a two-point-five percent franchise fee that will actually keep people safe and do good for our community. And gato, that comment on agenda item forty-five is entirely uncalled for and childish, all you're hearing about is a two-point-five franchise fee, then maybe you should pull your head out of your ass and listen.
Ren, sorry, Ren Mattson, Ward Three, five-zero-three-one-two. Good evening, counsel. As I write these words, a genocide continues raging in Palestine, one-hundred-and-thirty-one days and about thirty thousand lives. Now, as I speak these words, one-hundred-and-thirty-five days into this genocide, I'm left to wonder how many more lives will continue to be taken mercilessly? How many more mothers? How many more fathers? How many more brothers, sisters, and entire families? How many more innocent children, infants under the age of one? I try putting myself into a number of any Palestinian shoes while I look into the eyes of my four-year-old nephew, and it is unfathomable, unbearable. How many more lives? How many more dollars? How many more of my and every American's hard-earned dollars are going to continue being funneled into the death machine that is Israel when the vast majority of us support calling for a permanent ceasefire? We are seeing cities all across the country calling for a permanent ceasefire. Many of these are Midwest cities, including Chicago, Detroit, Dearborn, and Minneapolis. Iowa City even passed a permanent ceasefire resolution last month. It only makes sense for the city of Des Moines to follow suit and begin calling for a permanent ceasefire as well. And so, Des Moines council, I ask you, which side of history will we be on? Unfortunately, the time has passed for us to be a leader, the very least we can do is follow the lead of our Midwest neighbors and call for a permanent ceasefire? Will you stand with me, with us, and do the right moral human thing, or will you remain complicit in this genocide? Ceasefire now. Thank you.
Luis Gomez, I live in Ward Four. Tonight, I want to use my time to ask all of you to take action in making Des Moines a safer city for marginalized and vulnerable members of our community. Our state legislators are actively working to make life harder and sometimes even illegal for houseless neighbors, immigrants, and members of the LGBTQ+ community. It's in time like this when we need community leaders to protect our most vulnerable neighbors. Your position as an elected public servant allows you to show up in ways that we cannot. Instead, the city government works to look after the interests of business owners, developers, landlords, and a violent white supremacist gang, the NPD. All of you, at one point, have talked about public safety being a priority. Providing accessible public transportation is not only your responsibility, but a public safety measure. Providing emergency extreme weather shelters accessible for everyone is not only a public safety measure, but it would have prevented the tragic death of two community members over the last couple years. Designating Des Moines as a safe haven for a transgender community does not only help our LGBTQ+ community, it helps all of us feel safer in the face of a fascist state. Designating Des Moines as a sanctuary city for refugees and displaced folks regardless of immigration status is a safety measure. Helping folks feel welcomed here and providing services for them, assuring that the NPD does not work with ICE, makes it easier for folks to become part of our community and makes everyone safer. I'm also here to ask that you pass a resolution calling for a ceasefire and an end to the occupation of Palestine. It is gross that you all remain quiet in the face of a genocide. It is disgusting that the city government decided on their own accord it would be a good idea to show support for a settler pseudo-state that has inflicted violence on Palestinians for decades and is carrying out an ethnic cleansing. As a resident of Des Moines, I am disappointed in the lack of empathy, compassion, and humanity this council has shown. Over and over, you all have came short of using your position to protect and serve us. As a human being, I am disappointed that you all do not use your privilege for the benefit of the community you're supposed to represent. You all seem to be more concerned with creating wealth and maintaining a position of power, and for that, you should be ashamed. The NPD does not need a new fifty-million-dollar station, we do not approve nor consent to that. End the genocide, free Palestine.
Hi, J.C. Van Rukel, I live in Ward Three. First, I'm going to request that all of you actually look at your community, see your neighbors, your community members who you serve. We are all a community, you are part of that community, so engage with us, look at us. We are all made of the same stuff. We all have a beating heart, we all breathe the same oxygen. So let's just be humans together, let's sit at the table together, let's talk like humans, and let's hear each other. We can have accessible and affordable public transportation, we can have a collective culture that accepts and embraces everyone for exactly who they are, where they're at, and exactly who they choose to present themselves to the world. We can make sure that everyone has access to fresh food, to clean water, and affordable housing. We can speak up for injustices that we see within our community and in Palestine, Sudan, Congo, and on. We can be a thriving, welcoming, and vibrant community that takes care of one another, works together, takes pride in their city, lends a hand to those in need, and celebrates the joys of others. You'd be really surprised how much humans thrive when their basic needs are met, and they can come out of that survival mode and start living, and they will turn, in turn, give back to the community that gives so much to them. So let's be a community and lift each other up. Let's learn to love and accept each other for who we are, because at the end of it all, we're all the same, and love is all there is. Darkness does not exist, it is simply the absence of light. Fear and hate are just the absence of love. The more love we give out, the more light we let in. So when you lay your heads on your pillow tonight, all of you, I really hope that you will remember our faces, hear our words, and listen to the voices of your community. We want to be in community with you. You serve us. So hear us. Don't we all want the same thing? Safety, security, good health, connection? Let's build that together, right here in Des Moines, from a place of love and community, and watch what happens, because I guarantee it will be beautiful. And from the bottom of my heart, I love you all, just as humans on this earth together, and I hope you can do better. Please, hear us. Thank you.
I think that's the end of our speakers, so...
I'll move to receive and file fifty-five A through J.
There's been a motion and a second, please vote.
Coleman, yes.
Six, yes.
Okay, the motion carries, that is the end of our meeting. At this time, I would... would accept a motion to adjourn. And also, there will be a, to remind everyone, budget meeting on the twenty-second at seven-thirty. It'll be an all-day, uh, work session on the budget. Now that we have finally gotten the numbers based on what the new property taxes have, uh, been implemented, how it impacts us. So, with that, is there a motion and a second to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I guess the voice vote. Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.